Welcome to the July 21st meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group applications on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members ask questions, if any. Members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item slash project and four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak. At this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. Please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberation session. In the deliberation session, commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. Commissioners then vote on each application, and results of the voting can be learned from the planning department at 205-5895. If some issues arrive in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending on the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes final decisions, subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, planned unit developments. But the planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications with the city council making the final decisions. Please turn off all your cellphones at this time. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking. We will call roll, except I don't have the roll. We don't have a roll. I don't have one. Here, I got one now. Alan Cameron here, Jennifer Denson, Carlos Gant, Shirley Sessions, Taylor Atchison, Matt Anderson, Nick Amberger here, Scott Jones, Susan Carley, Kirk Mate. We have a quorum. So we will begin with, well, Commissioner Jones has requested that we begin with item number four. Is that okay with you, planners? Is it four or five? Item number four, planned unit development. It is a, development is Right Way Christian Center Church, asking for approval to allow multiple buildings on a single building site. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
The applicant submitted electronic revisions yesterday. Staff has not yet had an opportunity to review them. At this point, we would like to recommend that the holdover be until the August 4th meeting, which will give us enough time to review and come up with recommended conditions.
Is the applicant in agreement? Recommendation is for a holdover and applicant agrees. Is any, if anyone's here to speak for, number four, you can go ahead and speak today, but if not, you also have a chance on August the 4th. Anyone against? We will recommend that for holdover. Now we'll move to item number one. It says Lyle Machinery Company Subdivision. It's recommended for tentative approval, subject to ten conditions. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the applicant wants, needs another holdover. They're finishing up some title research and need until the August 4th meeting.
Is the applicant agreeable to that? Recommended that number one be held over till August the 4th. So we will move on. Well, once again, if anyone's here to speak for or against, you can speak now or speak on August 4th. Okay, we'll move to number two, which is Florida Street Flats. It is an application for subdivision, planned unit development, and zoning amendment. Subdivision is recommended to approve for four lots. And planned unit development is recommended for approval with the finding of facts and nine conditions. Is the applicant present? In agreement?
Mr. Chairman, I probably need to clarify so he can wave on the subdivision, the traffic engineering comments. We need to strike the sentence in condition number four regarding the driveway condition because the driveway, the revised plan eliminated the fifth lot and the fifth building. So that condition, it also appears as if the driveway to the rear will not maintain 24 feet in width. Improvements in the right-of-way cannot extend beyond the extension of the property line without written consent of the property owner. The line, that first sentence, regarding the 24 feet in width, needs to be struck in condition number four on the subdivision. Same sentence needs to be struck in the PUD on number six.
Is the applicant in agreement? Is anyone here to speak for or against? We will move on to number three. Number three is the Chauva Palms subdivision application. It is recommended for approval based on seven conditions. Is the applicant present? Applicant is in agreement with staff recommendations. Anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak against? We'll move on to number five, since we've already done number four. Number five is a planned unit development for RGH Development to amend a previous PUD to allow multiple buildings on a single building site. I believe it is recommended for approval based on finding of facts A through B and approval subject to ten conditions. Is applicant present? Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Very good. Anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak against? We'll move on to number six. Number six is a planning approval application to allow an ax throwing business in a B3 community business district. It is recommended for, recommended to finding of facts A and B, and the approval would be subject to four conditions. Is the applicant present? Is applicant in agreement with staff recommendations? I'm sorry, did you state your name and address? And your question is about?
Let me add a little clarification to that. When this property was built, it was built in compliance with landscaping and tree plantings, and based on the plan submitted for this application, it does not coincide with the plan that it was built to, which showed compliance. So compliance is required to be maintained, and we just need to make sure that it has maintained compliance with landscaping and tree plantings. This plan does not correspond to the plan that was submitted and the building complied with at the time it was developed. And compliance is in perpetuity with landscaping and tree plantings unless you go through a process to amend your approved plan. On the plan that was submitted back in 2004. Correct. We can review that plan and determine if it is compliant and then substitute it. If it is not compliant, you'll need to work with the urban forester on how to achieve compliance.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman? I may. Just to save time and keep you from having to come back up, I'm seeing that you're also going to apply for a beer and wine license with ax throwing. How long have you operated in Pensacola? How long have you operated in Pensacola? Three years? Have you had any incidents with? These things are extremely popular. I've seen these things pop up all over the southeast. With an army background, I've also seen these things go crazy too. So that's why I always ask, when you mix alcohol and something like this, it can get quite interesting at times.
Any more questions from commissioners? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
Move on to number seven. Number seven is Square One Plaza, application for a subdivision and a zoning amendment. Subdivision is recommended for tentative approval, subject to nine conditions, and zoning is recommended for approval with two conditions. Is the applicant present? Okay. Well, we'll assume if he's not here that he's good with all the staff recommendations. Is anyone here to speak against this application? Anyone here to speak for? Okay, we'll move on to number eight. Number eight is, number eight is Providence Park, application for subdivision and planned unit development. It is to create three legal lots of record from two and to amend a previously approved PUD master plan to allow shared access in parking. Subdivision is recommended for tentative approval with nine conditions, and the PUD is recommended with a finding of facts A through D and eleven conditions. Is the applicant present? All good. Is anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak against? Okay. I believe that concludes the business portion of the meeting.
We do have a couple of items under other business. We do need to go ahead and take number nine because the commission will need to vote on it, and that is the acquisition of private right-of-way easement by eminent domain. I need to go, I would, wanted to take an opportunity to go over it with the commission because I don't believe any of the commission members present have had this type of application before. I believe we've had less than five of these in thirty-something years. So it's a bit of a learning curve each time we have one. Basically, what you have is, is a landlocked piece of property. In the state code, for a landlocked piece of property, it sets up the process that an application, an applicant has to go through in order to gain access to the property. While that is accomplished via probate court, the approval of the planning body is required. Hence why it is here. The applicant has submitted three different options in order to gain access. The first one, which is here, Dan Williams Road, is an open public right-of-way. The applicant proposes to gain access via a private easement serving his property here. The next option has a narrower easement, 10 feet. It widens in these three locations, presumably so if two cars are beside each other, someone can pull over and pass and get around. And it also extends beyond the property in question to two other properties, both of which are landlocked as well. The third option connects to Bowers Lane. Bowers is over here. It is an open public right-of-way, and the third option has the right-of-way going across this common property line. It would then front the other two landlocked pieces of property and then serve the property in question. The planning commission simply either approves or denies their requests in terms of what they proposed, but the probate court and their process is the ultimate deciding jurisdiction.
What we call a private condemnation, and the court decides what the law says, the court will select the most convenient access to a public right-of-way. So the applicant cannot say, this is the route I want, Judge, and judge says yes or no, it's up to the judge to decide. So this applicant did the wise thing and chose every possible option for y'all to approve. So once it gets to the probate court level, the judge will know that the city has blessed all three of the options. So we approve this, we're not approving any one, we're just saying probate court, we've done our job, now it's up to you to choose which one.
Doug, I've got, I've got a question. I'm looking at it through a geometry standpoint, and 10 foot, I mean, that's perfectly fine, but those 90 degree angles, I mean, I don't see how you realistically do it that hard and make it, make it, I mean, if you had a scenario where property owners were going to put up fences and maybe keep it tight.
Yeah, well-
You almost can't navigate that.
They, um-
You can't navigate any of, any of the options, really.
These options went along the property lines and didn't divide any of the adjacent property in half. Certainly, the court can adjust the width or the degree of turn if the court so desires.
That'd be the only concern to me, if somebody was thinking about building a house or something and-
Yeah.
-had to stick within that tight corridor, you almost could not do it.
That's the difference. Right now, there is no physical access to this property. This property, I didn't go back and do a, you know, a search, but the previous owner was different from this owner and this owner.
Court, I mean, the statute, I think, allows up to 50 feet, 30 feet. So if the court thinks, Nick, to answer your question, if the court thinks it can be, should be wider, then the court has the discretion to do that, even if we bless these three.
It's obviously worth the turn.
It's more the turn, yeah, sure.
The 10, the 10 would have worked fine, but those turns, I just don't-
Has anybody talked to the property owners who's looking at being impacted by this? Is there any?
Fire, it's, once the private condemnation is filed in probate court, that's when he serves his complaint. And I'm, I would assume this property owner, this applicant here, has talked to some of his neighbors, why he got to this point or how, we don't know. But if he's going this route, it tells me that they're not cooperating with him, access. But the law does not want landlocked property, so it allows this process to continue. He has to pay for it if the court decides, whatever, once one of the courts decides, the court will have a property that wide of lay-up rate, and the applicant will have to pay that landowner, that money for, you know, to actually get his-
I'm hesitant to vote either way until I hear an opinion by the folks that actually own the property.
They will have that wide in probate court.
That's the-
Yeah, I, I get it, but for us to vote on, I mean, that, that's, I'm voting on something, I don't even know where they stand on this issue.
You're just voting that any of these three are found from a planning subdivision, and the law's going to give them an easy-
Kirk will probably agree with me. A lot of these, I've done several of them over the last thirty-some-odd years, and to be honest with you, some of them, I guess most of the ones I did were in the county and didn't have to come within the city. I did come before the planning commission one time, but I, I think that through no fault of anybody, some of these get through probate court without coming to the planning commission because it's not uncommon to see these filed. Yeah, that's fine. Because if, if, if the procedure works like, if the procedure works like it should, then the applicant's lawyer will submit with his complaint in probate court, the minutes from this meeting or something from the, the letter of decision from the staff, and so the judge would read that. So, yeah, I think that would be, that would be fine.
Any more questions from commissioners?
I have one. Will we be voting on each one of these individually as a whole?
I believe that will close the public portion of the meeting. We'll now go into deliberation and start with item number one, Lyle Machinery subdivision. Recommended tentative approval, subject to ten conditions. You're right. We are holding that one over. Okay. I'll make the- Okay, I make the motion that we hold that over to August 4th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. Sorry about that. Number two. Subdivision and PUD and zoning amendment for Florida street flats. Subdivision is recommended to approve four lots. Planned unit development is, as a finding of facts A through F. And sub, and a recommended for approval, subject to nine conditions. Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So we will take the planned unit development now with the finding of facts A through F. And it's recommended for approval with nine conditions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The rezoning portion is recommended for approval. Subject to two conditions. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Three is Chauva Palm subdivision.
We just, I thought we were doing two. I, I've, I've got some questions on three and I didn't know that we were voting on that. I thought we were voting on two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I do have questions on three. I'm very familiar with that property because I've actually had some issues with residents along that lake and, and this build is going along a wetland on the, the north side of that property is, is one of the concerns. So how are we mitigating the issues to that runoff into the lake that, you know, that we've already experienced issues with? How, how's that being addressed?
Yeah, I mean, the, the rough answer is, is the engineer of record will have to address all of those things in the permitting process. You know, where wetlands are delineated, they'll have to get core engineers' approval if that's, if that's allowable. Possible, like, a scenario where they might have to do some mitigation somewhere else. I mean, they'll have to work through all of that in their, in their, in their design
Has any of that site work been done? Any, any opinions to this point that, that we know of? I mean, I mean, have you even looked at, at that property to see how you're, because the, from what I'm looking at, the parking lot that you're gonna put on the north side of that property is gonna be right over the wetland area that I'm depicting on the environmental locator map.
No, no, it's not, it's really, that, that piece of, that piece of, leaving alone, but they are coming to like, kinda coming right through there.
Yeah.
So they will have, they will have to deal with core engineers and us on that. I mean, it could be that they move it over and it's just, they'll, they'll have, they'll have to deal with the permitting process.
Yeah, just for the record, for the planning commission, I just wanna make sure that that's addressed because there, again, I've, I've dealt with issues on this lake with residents there, and when we start impacting that, it could have second and third order effects that will exacerbate issues that already exist with that lake. The second thing is, on the proposed two-way exit, this location is on a very high-traffic area that backs up on Cottage Hill and Solly Road. It, it's a four-lane with the turn lane on Cottage Hill. And then there's a recommendation to be able to make a left-hand turn, which I think is gonna be extremely problematic in the high-traffic periods. And I think that's something that we definitely need to look at.
They're gonna, they're gonna be down at the, eastern, eastern end.
That, that's gonna be four lanes of traffic, especially in the afternoons westbound, as folks are trying to exit out of that, that build. That's gonna be a major problem. Yeah, on Cottage Hill. That is a bad intersection.
So, Mr. Bird, is this your project? Are the commissioners okay with Mr. Bird chairing?
Jerry Bird, Bird Surveying Company. On the wetland issue, they had a wetland study done, and even though it, the city website shows the wetlands further south than what they really are, according to the environmentalists that flagged it. So we're not encroaching into the wetlands. But the, the owners are well aware of the two-way driveway on the east. It will be hard to do, but there's more than just morning and afternoon traffic times. I mean, during the day, they'll be able to exit, go into the east, turning left out of there. If it's a problem, they'll turn right and go maybe up Cody Road and do a U-turn and come back to the traffic light and turn left. But, you know, they're in the, the lesser traffic times, that left-turn driveway will
It, it's not that that's gonna be problematic. It's, we've already got wrecks with builds like this on Hillcrest that are very similar, Hillcrest and Cottage Hill. And it's not gonna be long before Cody looks like Hillcrest Road with all of the subdivision construction that we've got going on there. Jennifer, is there any insight you can provide on how we can mitigate this? They can't do that, and the problem is that traffic still backs up that far on Cottage Is there a way that we could run the traffic circle out to Solly Road?
It, it looks like there's kind of an awkward little parcel of land along Cody that's almost, almost eliminated all that information.
Uh, yeah, that is not a good exit point. Cody Road, I believe, is probably six or eight feet higher than the land right there. I mean, you, it's all downhill and, well, here's the reality of where we are. Folks get impatient, they force their way out, and they create wrecks. And, and I've seen that all up and down Cottage Hill Road. And at that intersection, it's one of the worst that, that we have. So we're, we're gonna have to find a way to mitigate that left-hand turn out on Cottage Hill Road during some type of traffic. You know, timing where between this hour and this hour, right, right-hand traffic only type thing, can we do that, Jennifer?
Well, a lot of times, if you put the notification up, they'll, they'll do that, as long as it's, you know, if that, that is something that is enforceable, which we can work on. You know, I, I just, this is a problem. That's gonna be wrecked right there. That, that's a problem that we need to fix. That's just where we are. And we, we keep talking about how bad traffic is in the city and how do we fix it? This is where we fix it. So we need to come up with a solution. This is a problem. Do we know what kind of restaurant's gonna be in there? It says it's got a restaurant.
I do not know. I was just doing the subdivision, not working directly with the owner on the design of the buildings.
As Lord help us if it's a free sack, these are Starbucks.
Oh.
Yep. And that was why I asked that question. Can they get that answer to us in a week?
This is only a subdivision. The zoning's in place. This is not-
Yeah, I get it.
This is just establishing lot lines, and the commission, unless they change their vote, this one's already been voted, been approved as recommended.
Well, I thought we were voting on another one, so I think we need to bring this one back. These are significant issues, and to approve this, this is a PUD we're voting on.
No, sir, no.
We're not approving the site, not voting on a site plan. All we're doing is voting on the subdivision-
With lot lines.
So are they still gonna have to bring a PUD up to this commission?
No, sir. There's no site plan specific approval based on this associated with this application.
So how do we fix these problems? This is a problem. It's gonna be.
What do you say?
I know, so when, that's my point. If, if this is the only time this comes before a planning commission, and we know there's a problem, at what point do we get to, to try and alleviate a problem before we start seeing people get hurt? Because they will. You can write it down today, if this gets built with a restaurant and that traffic starts coming out on Cottage Hill Road trying to make a left-hand turn, there will be wrecks here.
That is more, the way I look at it, since this is a subdivision and I understand everything you're saying, and, and we do need improvements in, in this area, it's more of an infrastructure, traffic department, how can we fix this? Planning commission does not, y, your vote legally is just about the, the lot lines, not that site plan. I'm not sure why the site plan is included on, on this application. They could have come and, and, and not even shown that to us. We cannot deny an owner the use of this property. We, we, we could, we could restrict it if that site, if this was a PUD and, or a rezoning and the site plan was part of the approval, we could say right-in, right-out only. If that's what the traffic department suggested or, or recommended. But here on a subdivision, that site plan is not what we vote for.
I get what you're saying, I guess my point is, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here looking at accidents waiting to happen. We've got no way to get in that process. Planning commission, this is a planning issue, you know, so, and, and there's my, my point is, how do we stop accidents from happening at the planning stage? And this is a planning issue, and I, I don't know, this, we can have this discussion offline. I get what you're saying, and, you know, we just need to have a discussion afterwards, how we can try and get after this.
Any more questions from commissioners? Do I have a motion on number three? Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Move on to number four. Number four is recommended for holdover for August 4th. I'll make that motion as a-
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five is planned unit development, RGH Development, eight, one eighty-six Stanton Road. Staff recommends finding of facts and ten conditions. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Number six. Planning approval for, to allow ax-throwing business in a B-three community business district, subject to, staff recommends finding of facts and four conditions. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation, adopting findings of facts A and B.
Motion and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number seven is Square One Plaza, nine fifteen and nine oh seven Hillcrest Road. Proposed rezoning from B-two to B-three and a subdivision. Subdivision is tenant, is recommended tentative approval with nine conditions and the zoning recommended for approval with two. We'll take the subdivision first.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could get planning staff just to make sure that the updated engineering comments, I think I emailed those later because of an additional drawing they submitted, just make sure that the updated engineering comments get in to the later
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comment? comments from the commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Number eight. Application for subdivision and planned unit development Providence Park. Pardon me? Oh, the second part, I'm sorry. Second part of number seven, the zoning. It is recommended for approval with I believe four conditions, two conditions. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zoning passes. Now number eight, Providence Park. Six hundred Providence Park, re-subdivision, uh, applying for, create three legal lots, correct, from two legal lots, um. Subdivision is tentatively, is recommended for tentative approval of nine conditions. We'll take that first and then the planned unit development next.
Approve subject to staff recommendations.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Planned unit development is staff recommends finding of facts A through D with eleven conditions. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And then number nine, with regard to the access. I suppose, Margaret, that we need a motion to approve.
Yes, sir, we do. Um, and you may want to include some verbiage, uh, that requires proper radiate at each ninety-two degree turn to allow for proper vehicle maneuvering.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Any further business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, we are submitting a request, uh, that you have a call for public hearing. Public hearing date would be August eighteenth. And the purpose of this public hearing is to amend the downtown development district regulations in the existing zoning ordinance as well as the downtown development district regulations in the recently approved Unified Development Code that the city council approved last week. Uh, the purpose of this amendment is to, uh, create a new special district for the civic center site or regulations for that special district. Uh, when the downtown development district code was adopted in May of twenty fourteen, uh, two different special district areas were created without development criteria. One of those districts is the press register complex on the north side of downtown. And the other one is the civic center site as well as parts of the Fort Conde Village area that are uh, involved where the interstate comes out of the tunnel and has the overpasses. So this, uh, proposal is to actually create development criteria for the civic center portion of the southern special district. The intent is that we will establish criteria for building height maximums. Uh, the actual uses that it can occur in the sub-districts for the special district and, uh, design criteria in terms of the building materials and setbacks and things like that. So we will need a vote for a call for public hearing from the planning commission. Uh, if it is approved to be held on August eighteenth, we propose to post the documents showing the amendments by Monday of next week as well as submit the, uh, legal ads that are required by state law for advertising.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. With regards to this, the city recently hired a consultant to look at possible uses of the civic center moving forward. Are we going to have, um, input from that consultant before we have this public hearing? I know it's close.
Well, we have been working with the consulting team. So, uh, what is going to be made public and presented to the planning commission includes input from that design team.
But we're defining left and right limits for that use. Or, and my, I guess my question is, or my, my issue is to make sure that whatever it is that they're looking at for future uses is contained within whatever we outline in the updates that we're making. And make sure that they're aligned. What I don't want to happen is we go through this process, we lay out updated zoning codes. And, and then the, this consultant comes back and says, hey, we'd like to do A, B, and C. And C happens to be outside of the parameters that we just approved for the UDC.
Well, just to reiterate on, uh, Bird's comment, um, they have seen iterations of the, the wider parameters as, uh, it complies with the standards that we must put forward with respect to the district. And so they have offered that feedback to us, um, throughout this early stages of the process. Um, and so we, we believe that those parameters, um, based on their input are, are wide enough to incorporate future proposals that they may see coming forward.
I would request that the city ask the consultants to be here on the nineteenth. So they could answer any questions in line with that and make sure that we're good.
It, it is my understanding through Mr. Delap's office that, that, uh, invitation request has been made.
I have a question. Is there a contemplated development in the works for that property? I guess yes, is the answer. Yeah. Okay. Is the consultant aware of what the developer is going to do?
Yes, sir.
Is the consultant the developer?
For, for the, the contemplated project?
Yeah.
No, but we've been working in alignment with the, that consulting team as well.
Got you. Okay. Do you have a motion?
Some, uh.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Any more business? All right, we're adjourned.